Good evening.
Good evening.
Before I do anything, let me call up a gentleman here. I swear to this gentleman is our new Hardeman County Commissioner and we're going to place him here tonight. Chief Wood. All right, thank you for that. I know he will serve the community well and serve this county and his district well. All right, if we could please, we're going to go ahead and have our prayer and play it. Commissioner Bufford, would you please lead us in prayer?
Amen to God. I have a Father who come once again, bow and say thank you, oh heaven and father for what you have done and what you're going to do, oh heaven and father. Oh heaven and father, thank you for this day that you made that we'll never see again, oh heaven and father. Clear our hearts and minds, oh heaven and father, when we can move this county forward, in Jesus' name. Pray for our country, our state, our nation, oh heaven and father. In Jesus' name I do pray. Amen.
Commissioner Weems, would you please lead the sermon?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Please proceed. Madam Furt, would you please proceed to the end of the roll call, please.
Bell?
Here.
Bumper?
Here.
Dever?
Here.
Yattlin?
Here.
Gillum?
Here.
Granton?
Here.
Hensley?
Jenkins?
Here.
Kinnamore? Lake?
Here.
Lemire?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Sane?
Here.
Vickers?
Here.
Wayne?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
All right, thank you. We'd like to say, uh, please be in prayer for the Ray Love Lady founding and that's Commissioner Hensley's sponsor and all. Had a bear with him yesterday, so please remember them in prayer. Is there anybody on our public forum list that we have? Is there any, anybody that would like, thank you Sheriff, that would like to address the commission that didn't get a chance to sign up? We want you to have the chance to opt out. I see you did. That's what happened little one. Thank you. Uh, you have the minutes for August the twentieth and stretch of maybe almost twenty-four. Any questions on those minutes? One correction, Madam Furt, on twenty-four, twenty-four minutes. Will there be approved in writ?
Second.
No questions being made? Second. Any discussion? Over minutes. Seeing none. All those in favor, please sit down at the same time.
Aye.
And we have the recapping list of notaries.
Some moved.
They're in. No questions being made?
Second.
Second? All right, any discussion on the notaries? Seeing none. All those in favor, please sit down at the same time.
Aye.
All opposed, not like sign. All right, we'll move into reports. Uh, do we have Mr. Swift here? No? We do have a fill-in for superintendent. Come on Lacy, you want to come on in?
I'm going.
For Dr. Smith. Now she's filling in for Dr. Smith tonight, so y'all be good.
Dr. Smith said in regards, you had to be uptown. I've given you our budget amendments, along with that you should have your athletic passes. Two, you've already picked up yours before, so, um, I got concerned, I can't remember, I'll hang there for a second. So we'll go into budget amendments and after each one, if you got any questions, you can ask them up again. Everybody ready? Putting on? The first is a, um, one of our budget amendments to our cafeteria fund. We restructured the duties of our cafeteria workers and therefore that led us to the need to shift some of our cleaning to the ABM who currently provides all of our cleaning services in the district. We didn't know what we were going to do when we pass or when we develop the cafeteria budget. Have you got any questions on that one? The second one is also an amendment to our cafeteria budget. It is our fresh fruit and vegetable grant. This is a grant that we received that's going to benefit Ballard Elementary and Grand Junction Elementary. They're the two schools that are the recipients of that grant. What this does is it attempts to introduce different fruits and vegetables to children. Any questions? We'll move one more. Any questions? The beds are four pages stacked together and that is one grant called the ISN grant. And the bonus school's month is a very large grant. Um, look, it is two million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And that covers the next two years. Um, this is a teacher grant that's providing for the upgrade of our middle school and high school libraries. It's going to provide some textbooks. Uh, it is going to buy instructional supplies in our career tech area. Uh, it's also going to help us build capacity, uh, within our middle and high school personnel. This is a very detailed grant, that's why it's so long. We have to keep up, we add, um, each expenditure by school. And so, you see Ballard Central, Ballard Middle, Orange Beach, and Waddle are the benefactors of this grant.
So do we have to make expenditures in order to get this, was there like a, we have to pay the market? And they reimburse us, or is this?
Almost all of our grants are reimbursable. We have to spend the money first and then we file in our, my area of responsibility, we file at the beginning of the month for the expenditures for the prior round.
But, but it's a hundred percent refundable?
Yes, yes, yes. This, we're going to get two million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars back, you can spend it all for the next two years.
I have another question. Is, I see on here, um, state the time here for, you know, school. How is that, um, you know, are those funds divided? Explain it to me.
We're going to be paying some personnel. We have a middle college advisor. We have an innovation person that we will be paying out of this grant. So therefore Derek is returning that as to be paid on that.
Same as the medical insurance also?
Meth law. All of that, social security, medicare, retirement, medical insurance, all of that. We have to pay, um, out of this grant, if they are paying out of the grant itself.
I've got a question on page two, their, uh, equipment for BCHS and MHS. You got a hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and fifty-five thousand, what was that equipment?
I do not know specifically what that equipment is. You have to call me so I can look at it on the screen. But that is mainly in the career tech area. I can't tell you specifically, I'm sorry, I just don't remember.
Why is travel on one page and it's on the next page, what, five thousand and then you got forty-five?
Well, you'll see that there's several, like on one page it's seventy-two, one thirty. That's a, that's one code where we're paying someone. And where do you see it again? Uh, seventy-two, two thirty, that's also where we're paying someone. This, the, um, seventy-two, one thirty, I think there's some teachers and the seventy-two, two thirty, what do you support personnel?
Okay, I see that. Thank you.
I have one more question. Higher specialization. Okay, if you were a teacher and you were hired after July one, two thousand fourteen, the retirement is different than if you were hired prior to July one, two thousand fourteen. And it's just another type of retirement.
So is Lisa, each school will receive another person or a middle college advisor?
I believe those are at the high school. And they have an innovation person that's in the district.
But you said everybody, this is all academic related, or?
Yes, yes. Now there are some support, but I would say eighty-five percent of this is being poured into these schools. For instance, our libraries at all of our schools are being redone. I think some of that, um, even came in this week.
That's what I was telling. I know you may spend a lot of money, not you personally, but the school system.
Well, my husband likes it.
Over the school, right, with building improvements. I see that on the last page. Um, just of six thousand dollars and four thousand.
Right, most grants like this don't allow us to do the building improvements. The building improvements have come out of, um, either our, um, general fund or as you're paid, a lot of, a lot of that was paid out of our COVID.
Thank you.
One more question. I see you have, um, official, you might add, that you regular instruction equipment. What does this stuff, are you just saying, was that the one?
I'm sitting here, I'm thinking most of that is going into the libraries. This is a very detailed grant, this is a very detailed grant. I can't refer you to the specifics of it. Um, but I'm thinking most of that is what's going into your libraries, not various.
Because we have each one of these.
How do we have to do that? Questions? Ready to go? The next one is a budget amendment. Uh, as you all know, we've had a hailstorm in April. We did not get our money off of our insurance until right at the end of the year. Therefore we replace those cars, we did not get it into our budget. So, um, that money closed into fund balance and we're just taking it out of fund balance for Dr. Smith to be able to replace some of those cars or vehicles. I don't know if they're all cars. That's the forty thousand. Forty thousand missing. I think the intent is to spend about twenty-one each, to do two, to spend twenty-one each one. Want to move on now? Want to go on to the next one? Total amendments, a hundred and sixty thousand, oh eighty-nine. We are mandated, we are demanded by the state to move this hundred and sixty thousand, oh eighty-nine out of our federal Fed funds. Uh, and move it into our general purpose fund and this is to provide early intervention services for behavior. So that we can catch behavior trends early and possibly reverse it. Would there be something like a fade-out plan? I'm sorry, would there be something like a fade-out plan with early intervention? I don't, I don't know. Uh, we were just required this year to move it out, so I, I really don't know. And we're paying, um, two teachers assistants and one, and part of one behavior analyst, I guess. Because we're not saying a fade-out plan, but that's what the behavior analysts they use. Okay, okay, I can do that. Not my area of expertise. And that's all I have.
Any more questions? Any more questions? Or may I say it's clear? Will the budget amendments be approved as presented?
I say.
No questions being made? Second, approve the amendments as presented. Any discussion on them, on them yet? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Bell?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Yattlin?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lemire?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. All right, I see. As part of the September. Someone's part.
Commissioner?
Sir.
I didn't know how far back you got with the information. So I went back from July, to give you information from July. If you'd like to look more than that, feel free to reach out to me and to me whenever you like. We had fifteen building permits, uh, presented or granted in July for five thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. And August, we had fifteen building permits granted for two thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and four cents. Today, in September, we have had six for a total of two thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars, which brings a total of essentially a lot of person, ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. We have a couple of major things going on with a subdivision being presented to the planning commission. Uh, that will be on Highway fifty-seven between Salt Mary and Mary Junction. Uh, the person developing the subdivision, the mayor, you have, uh, following all that we've asked him to do. And it's going well, so I think it'll be a benefit to the county. Once it gets done. Any questions?
I have a question. Do we have, um, any updates from the lawsuits?
I don't know. I don't know what we started with. You're talking about lawsuits or settling lawsuits?
Yeah, we're, we're just missing those. Make sure, especially if I'm out, I'll check on it. Make sure. Pardon?
All of them?
Yes. All right, we're going to start on, uh, committee reports. Commissioner Bell?
Yeah.
Pardon? A reporter for the building.
The building is progressing, uh, very well, beyond, uh, well ahead of schedule. They should be, we had a walkthrough last week, kind of a pre-final. Uh, all of the bunch of those items will be done by tomorrow and I think we're going to have a final walkthrough, I believe, on Friday to the interior portions of the building. The new paving was finished today. Uh, I got to get with Jackie on some bumpers and hider, piles to keep, be able to separate the, the traffic. But, uh, I've got to be in tomorrow, tomorrow to, uh, along with this Amber for figuring out the lines and the striking. So we're, we're right there, honestly. I, I would foresee by the end of next week. Uh, I know Miss Amber's already started moving stuff in. Uh, I think we'll be, once the locks are keyed and, uh, I mean, we're, we're right there, so. Yeah, another week, we ought to be, we ought to be turned over to, to Miss Amber. We ought to be coming together.
And where's my dear?
No, I suppose she had a, a game for one of her grandbabies up there.
Volleyball. Volleyball.
Volleyball. She's usually here, that's why I have a function back there.
Commissioner Bufford? Commissioner Granton, do you have any something?
I don't have anything tonight, ma'am.
The beer board, do you have anything?
We did have one applicant, uh, lack of girl license on this past Friday, so we just waiting to get the report back to the guy. I just have a question for Commissioner Bell. I, just have a question, I give her. Did we stay with this budget on that building project?
We, uh, I, we stayed, we, we stayed, I believe so. I mean, I, I don't remember. It's, it's, okay, there's been so much water under the bridge since then. We approved, uh, a, a, the, the price issue. And we had about fifteen thousand dollars in contingencies set aside. We used about half of that. So we ought to, they ought to be giving us back about seventy-five hundred bucks, I think, when it's all said and done. However, we still got to get with Jackie and, and we're going to have to purchase some bumpers and stuff so people can't run into the building and that kind of thing. So, it, it, but we ought to be, we ought to be right there.
Yes, on the library board, we're talking about, since I was first elected, uh, the Ballard Hardeman County Library is still a vibrant part of our community and, uh, and we appreciate all your support. They have somewhere between eighteen hundred and two thousand patrons per month that utilize the Wi-Fi services and hundreds of other patrons are utilizing other programs and services that they offer. So we appreciate your support on that. And in addition to the Baltimore Harbor County Library, we also have the Imagination Library, which my son enjoys reciting his book every month. But I would like to ask Mr. Monroe Woods to come forward and give an update on the time of this topic, please. Welcome, Mr. Woods.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to do this. It just so happened that this is the twentieth anniversary of the Imagination Library in the state of Tennessee. The Imagination Library operates, of course, the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is made available in all, to all Tennessee children with the partnership between the Dolly Parton Imagination Library and the Governor's Early Literacy Program. So all ninety-five counties in Tennessee have the program. And every child in the state of Tennessee, aged zero to five, are eligible to take part in the program. Half of the cost for the program is provided by the Governor's Early Literacy Commission. And the other half is raised by the local entity that operates the program with totally. So in Hardman County, we have a group of folks who work each, every day, really, raise their money. They pay Hardman County's half of the program. There are about eleven of us during that. Gary Yavard, or what about the President of the Board, who's here tonight, did well. And during this anniversary, the twentieth anniversary, we promote two things. Hardman County started nineteen years ago, so next year we will be celebrating our twentieth year. We can start for Hardman County. We have a NASCAR. And our NASCAR is, is visiting, is visiting Hardman County this month. Coming around to thank everybody for the support, the financial support that you provided so that we could operate the program. He's also visiting his friends who read the books. And so he will be going to collaborate with Hardman County and have a sense and nice conversation with the library of Grand Junction. And we're gonna schedule a date for them to spend in, in Grand Junction. So that the children who get, who get books or come in for whatever reason, will be introduced to Booker. Booker will go home, milk about Cooper, back to Nashville. But in that time, we did use the opportunity to do two things. One is to, if there are any children in Hardman County, be twenty ages of zero and five, who's not on the program, we encourage those people who are aware of that to make sure they get enrolled. They can sign up online to the Early Literacy Program, online, for the Governor's Early Literacy Program. Or they can do it through the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, or they can visit any library in Hardman County. And they can sign up through that process as well. The other part of that is fundraising. And so for anyone who would like to make donations to the Imagination Library, they can do so by simply scanning this. In fact, you can take your camera out now, you can scan this. Tell friends or people you know who might want to donate to the Imagination Library. They can do that by scanning this and then you can make your donation. And when you do so, just make sure you say you're donating to the Hardman County Imagination Library. And that, that would be, that's a way in which everybody can participate in, in celebrating not only the twentieth year anniversary of the program, but the nineteenth year for Hardman County and having to support the cost that we face. Finally, last year, of the ninety-five counties in Hardman County, in, in the state of Tennessee, Hardman County was the number one county in the state. In terms of the percentage of children that were enrolled and participating in, in, in the state of Tennessee. Hardman County was number one in that category. We had more, more children participating in the program, percentage-wise, to the number of the total of any other, any other county. I don't know if we got an issue, we'll find out next month. So thank you so much for your support of the program and anything you can do to assist in getting additional children on the program or having us bring the money that we need to pay our share, it'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods. Thank you, sir. It's a great program, the Imagination Library. Thank you for what you do, sir. Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Mr. Ryan, you want to say that? All right. We'll move into, as a resolution, I, I've been asked about for quite some time about, about the purchase orders that we do for the county that's for three hundred dollars. I've talked to our budget chair, Commissioner, that, that needs to be increased. And so we've done a resolution. We could consider that going to require the purchase order for a thousand dollars or above. It's hard to, it's hard to get parts, it's hard to get different things we need again for that three hundred dollar payment. I don't know how long it's been in place. I was asking, I asked Mr. Graves the other day, he's, he, as long as he's been here, he knows it's been here, so. At least ten years or more, so. We've got that one. Do you have any questions on that? And we have another resolution, this is eliminated. When they were doing the resolutions for our budget, this was inadvertently left off. I think it's already been through the school system, though. It's about the general obligation of school loan, two thousand thirteen, about the payment and the interest. So we just had to add that and then send that back in. So those are the figures there. It's already been added, it was left off from just one of the sheets, so it's two hundred and one thousand six hundred.
So Mary, you said you wanted to increase the amount for the purchase order from three hundred to a thousand?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. We have to do, on, on the purchase orders, have to get different bids. And it's, it's, it's a lot, a lot of paperwork to burn out. Because everything seems like it's, it's higher than, you know, you wanna get something, it's two hundred ninety-nine, three hundred ninety-nine. And you gotta go get quotes, you gotta get competitive bids for those, so. We're just asking that you raise, or consider raising that limit up to a thousand dollars. Do we need, Madam Kirk, do we need to take those individual resolutions?
I think we can keep them all.
Yeah. Okay, let's go ahead and take them, let's take them separately, since we have that one about the purchase order amendment for a thousand dollars. Resolution number zero nine dash seventeen, that's twenty twenty-four.
So move your bread on the resolution.
Check. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions? Say no, we'll have a roll call vote, Madam Kirk, if you would, please, proceed.
Bell?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Deveri?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Gilam?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lemire?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Our next resolution, that we had, the one that was intended to turn in. Any questions on that? Not as we're making to approve it, so move. Motion's been made and seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Say no, Madam Kirk?
Bell?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Deveri?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Gilam?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lemire?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
And I have just a couple more things. This month is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And they sent in a resolution for our county, and I have signed it, saying that this month will be awareness for suicide prevention. So if you know someone that needs mental health, please contact someone. Please don't, don't go by without contacting them. So just wanna make you aware of it. Then we have appointments for our committees. There was not any change, really, since we added Commissioner Gavin to the airport, to the property, and to the public records for these. And then I will address the number one after that. But these are our regular Hardman County committees that we have. Those are the only changes that we had where we're adding Commissioner Gavin. Is there a motion that we accept those, please?
So, check.
Motion's been made and seconded. I don't think we will recall all that. All city and five?
This is checked.
Yes, sir.
Is the nine-one-one committee included in this, or you want to have that separate?
No, so that's separate, like that. Yes, these are just the committees that we have here on this, on this sheet here. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say the Madam Sane out.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I have one more. Nine-one-one committee. Some, there are three, it will not roll, Sheriff Doolan, Brandon Plunk, and Mike Jones. They were already appointed and their terms will not end until twenty twenty-six. But the others, I have contacted different mayors and, and asked who would they like for an appointment. And contacted Mayor Bowden, my wife, he said Debbie Burton, contacted Milton's mayor, he said himself, and Martin. Talked to Jim Daniel and to Ricky Ayers. They said appoint Bobby Hensley, that was their commissioner, they'd like to see him. Talked to Ms. Kelly, Jackie Kelly for two, she said she would be willing to serve. Talked to Mayor Lane, he said he'd be willing to serve. Hunter Brewer, I had talked to, talked to him as well, he's from the Hornsberry area. Now, he was, I had talked to the mayor, Mayor Bama, he said, why not Hunter Brewer? So, and those are the only ones left we have. Sheriff Doolan will not roll off till twenty-six, Brandon Plunk, and Police Chief. Then we have the advisory board. Are there any questions on that? Commissioners, did you have any concerns on that?
Well, before the meeting tonight, I, you know, I had a lot of questions, because I know this has been discussed here
Yeah.
uh, the past month or so, it's been pushed back, pushed back. But before the meeting tonight, I had a visit with Ms. Kelly, Ms. Jackie Kelly. And she shed some light on it that I wasn't aware of about different things, why she thinks she should be on it. That's a good point. But my question is, is this a committee or is this an executive board, number one? And number two, if it is a committee, how can it spend money within itself and not go through the Hardman County Commission for approval? Does that happen if this, if this is an executive board, that it can make its own calls without our concern or our approval or our lessons or our discussions whatsoever? So, you know, it's a lot of questions that I have. I mean, I can go on and on. But what I'd like to do, you know, we were, we were provided all these other committees tonight beforehand. And this one was on paper and not provided. And, you know, I'd like to review and, and kind of talk to the people that's gonna be put on here. You know, like for instance, the ones that was on it, were they contacted since they wanted to continue to be served or they just being replaced, you know, things like that. And, you know, that being said, I would like to table it till we can have more discussion on this. I mean, since this was just put in form, uh, before us tonight.
Yeah. We did have, and two to address some of that, two commissioners, we did have a, one of the people on there, it was an old name and we caught that and had to redo it, but my apologies for that, sir. Yeah, that, that's very interesting you brought that up. The nine-one-one board, and it is a board, it's a governing board, because they have the decisions. It is a separate entity. It's the Emergency Communications District, and they have their, their own board. And then they have the state board that they have to answer to. Is that my correct, or my chair, that's correct? And they do have the decision-making power, yeah.
It receives funding from every phone fax, the line, the internet line that comes into the county. And that goes through the state of Tennessee ECD, and it's funneled to each individual nine-one-one.
So, so, so this is not a committee, it's a board? And it, well, I called it nine-one-one committee, but the only power that the county has is to appoint. But the funds that they're, basically, is that the funds that they get from the nine-one-one fees? Yes, yes, they get all the fees, they, they bring in their fees. Yes. And also fees from different, I think. Yes, that's correct. That's correct. So they would be responsible for, and like Brad said, all we do is basically approve the appointment and then they, they? They handle themselves, that's all we do.
Because, Mary, that's the reason you contact each municipality to know who they would like to serve on the committee, right?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. The couple of, of course, Mayor Lane from Grand Junction was, was over the largest call center, I think, in West Tennessee possibly at one time. So several of these had quite a bit of dispatch and that type of experience. That's why I've reached out to them. There are some that have been in police. I think Mayor Kelly has been in, of course, dispatch. And we have utility representatives. And I, and I would tell you, the board is doing very well. They did approve something the other night to help the county out about our, you know, we've been talking about the repeater for the fire, fire repeater for the sound of the counties. That's, we've been working on that for months. So they did approve that, so that will be coming into play very soon. But now, you did say you'd like to table that. Is there a motion?
And the reason I'd like to table it is, I'd like to contact, because this is, once we appoint these people, they're, they're their own board. They're not a committee, they're a board.
Yeah.
They have a lot of authority, so I'd like to table it. And also, I'd like to hear from the director of nine-one-one, thoughts, her thoughts.
Okay. Is Ms. Markham here? You're requesting her to be here next meeting?
I am.
Yes, sir. Yeah, sure. And the appointment is made, of course, by law, is directed by TCA code seven dash eighty-six dash one oh one. And that tells about the governing authority and what their powers are. So it's up to the mayor to make the appointments and then by confirmation of the county legislative body. But is there a motion? Are you making a motion, sir, Commissioner? I'm making a motion to table this until next session, until the director of nine-one-one can appear before us and we do more research on this agenda. Is there a second, is there a motion? There's a second?
I'll say.
All right. To table most of that is on a wonderful debate, so we may move into the vote. We need a roll call vote.
Bell?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Deveri?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Gilam?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lemire?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
So we'll put that on the agenda, so we will, we'll contact Ms. Markham and have her. And I don't have, Commissioner, do you have that budget?
Yes.
Our budget chair, Commissioner. Sheriff, you've got their report from the court.
Yeah.
That's okay. I like the good.
Let her, let her pick up this lot, we, uh, uh, from the first to, to now, we picked up seven thousand four hundred and eighty pounds of garbage. Uh, year to day, we have picked up thirty thousand three hundred and twenty pounds of garbage. Off-county rubbish. We've had a hundred and fourteen arrests, sixty-seven reports on criminal incidents, nine road offenses, nine thefts and burglaries, eight traffic, traffic offenses, fourteen assaults, five, six offenses, four frauds, two vandalism, two trespassing, and two felony abuse drugs, twelve other weapons, I D theft disturbances, and recovered by, uh, felony abuse drugs, twelve other weapons, I, ID theft disturbances, and recovered, uh, recovered property. That's all I've reported.
Thank you, Sheriff. We did have an interesting afternoon talking about the new law that's changed for about domestic violence, and, uh, for the people that get, uh, charged with that, so.
Yeah, I could touch that if you, if you wanted to.
If you wanna do that.
So the Commissioner, Commissioner knows. Uh, new law passed July first, uh, we're trying not to get, uh, any need for a lawsuit, but, uh, uh, Judge Ingrid Bond on a person that is, uh, uh, arrested for aggravated domestic assault, the stipulation now, act of July one, is if they're released on bond, they have to be released on an ankle monitor. And that, that has to be monitored twenty-four seven. Uh, we spoke with the company today, uh, this is not gonna be a cost to the county, it's gonna be a cost to the offender. Um, it'll be a eight dollar a day charge to the, uh, offenders, they're gonna have to be placed on an ankle monitor and monitor. Uh, the victim of the assault is gonna be offered a device that if that ankle monitor, if that ankle, if the ankle bracelet gets too close, it's gonna go off, it's gonna notify us, or the call center, the call center notified dispatch, and we'll be dispatched where that offender is. So, that's what we're looking at.
Sheriff, did that, as far as the funds go, they have to pay that on the front end, or is the county gonna have to pay the bill and then try to collect from somebody?
The only way the county will have to play and pay is if the judge declares somebody indigent. Now, in this county, usually, and it's always been, if, if the person bonds out of jail, the judge considers that as a non-indigent person, because they're able to get the funds to bond out of jail.
So they'll have to also get the funds for their ankle monitor?
They'll have, they'll have to get the fund for their ankle monitor, so, uh, i- it's a win-win situation, because this company's gonna pay us fifty dollars for just putting the brunt of the ankle monitor on.
So, is there a particular time, I mean, this is like a thirty day, I mean, how long it may be out with the mon, uh, ankle bracelet?
Whenever, from whenever they get out, to on bond, to whenever they go to court, from the judge, from this, is that solid to the judge's order?
So they have to pay on the front end for this thing, for like, six months, or?
Well, they'll have to pay, they have to pay a, a, a fee to get it put on, and then they'll have to contact the company, and we don't have anything to do with that.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
It'll be the company.
Between them and the company?
Yes.
And if, if they don't pay the fee, the company comes, gets their ankle, but then they, they automatically?
Well, that's a violation of their probation and their put back in jail.
Gotcha.
A violation of their, their, uh, status on their bond.
So they'll, so they'll contact you, and just let you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Any question? Uh, a few months back, we approved those cameras, like a SkyCam, I don't know the proper term, that is not the proper term, but have, are they, have they been installed?
Waiting on them to get, waiting on them to get installed, and our thing has been approved.
Okay.
Up, up through the state level, we're, we're just waiting on them to install.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, matter of fact, I, I spoke with Brian and Billy today, and they're supposed to get me a, a timeline on when that's gonna happen, probably end of the week. I'll let you know.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Sheriff. You want me, you want me to stand up here for this, or? If, um, Commissioner, please, sir. Just, uh, only, only one present amendment tonight, uh, I had to go before the full commission, because it is, it is, which they restricted account. Uh, debit in account three, four, six, two, five, which is a sheriff's restricted fund, giving you a hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars, crediting, uh, vehicles, one forty-nine, six eighty-five, see your reason justification, uh, move from sheriff's permitted funds to the sheriff's vehicle line, purchased, uh, three new titles for patrol, and I believe Sheriff Doolin can share a law that's coming out of play.
Yeah, that, that could talk, give me legislation about law, uh, y'all know, the law's all school buses are, are bound at two hundred thousand miles, they're put out search, uh, they're no longer to be a part of transporting children. Uh, they're looking to wrap law enforcement up into that, uh, so I'm trying to get ahead of it instead of behind it. So we're trying to replace the vehicle there.
Sheriff, when you said, um, um, you are gonna be, so are y'all gonna be transported? You were trying to say.
Ma'am?
Are y'all gonna be transported? You said that, um, the school?
We, we transport all the time up here.
No, what I'm saying is that, you know, you're saying that you can only hold the capacity with the new law for the, uh, the school buses, so?
No, no, no. The school buses, after two hundred thousand miles, the, the school bus cannot be used to transport children anymore.
Okay.
So they're wrapping law enforcement up in this, this new law, so they're paying on retirement vehicles at two hundred thousand miles, is what they're, they're planning on doing.
Yeah, yeah.
I need time to steal with you.
And I think that they probably have emergency services for their department.
Yeah, and it's probably gonna affect the EMS also, so I'll just give you, have to.
Heard there may be an amendment to that.
Yeah.
Commissioner, the committee's fund and the restricted fund, same?
Same fund.
Same fund.
And these are never revenue fees from the, uh, sheriff's office that his office generates, and that fund, as of right now, is about a hundred ninety thousand dollars. Thank you. Take it.
How long you expecting this legal infringement? How long you expecting this legal litigation?
Well, we, we had to order them here pretty quick, and they won't start production in a little while.
Miss May, you might go by them before they come in. All right, any more questions? Is there a motion?
Somebody?
Second.
Motion been made, say. It's in discussion. Say, none, we'll move into a roll call vote, please, Madam Kirk.
Bell?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Lemire?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll move on down to our next item, uh, be our lawsuit update. Mr. Tom, would you be with us, sir?
Good evening. Since we met last, uh, there have been three, three individuals who picked the damages of the same call for that, uh, I guess, Commissioner Sane, uh, put in play, been approved by the commission, and so, they got, they got their payment back, uh, under, uh, Commissioner Sane's, uh, not one of his numbers, whatever, but I, I won't convince the commission to approve each of these, just so we have to tell the judge, this has been, you know, Commissioner LeBak's, we said to them, approve, and the first one debated neighbors, and he paid a total of thirty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and forty-five cents. Lindsay Bolden, eleven thousand five hundred eighty, seven dollars and twenty-four cents. Asher Banks, seventeen thousand thirty-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
We had a motion on that?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve those amounts for three individuals. Second. Motion been made, uh, who's second, sir?
Second, Mr. Sane.
Mr. Brown, it's been, it's been made, the second, and it's in discussion. Say, none, roll call vote, then, please, Madam. Clerk, could you do it, please?
Bell?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Lemire?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
And the, uh, the trial for the debtors is still set by October forty-first. The judge decided that, uh, trial liability has to hold three shifts of debtors, and then at the end of that, that liability part, the debtors need to go to damages, and the damages will be tried for the first shift debtors, and then the judge will adjourn for a week, and then we'll do the damages on the others, uh, three shifts of debtors. Any questions? That's all real life.